That should be recording now. Great. Hello, welcome to this week's COVID-19 media briefing. It's the 25th of June 2021. I'm Steve Thorne from the City Council's comms team. I'm joined by Abby Jaikman from Nottingham County Council's comms team, and also Alex Ball, Director of Comms for NHS locally. On our panel today is Jonathan Gribbin, Director of Public Health for Nottingham County, John Bruin, Chief Exec of Nottingham Healthcare Trust, and I'm pleased to welcome Lucy Hubber, the new Director of Public Health for Nottingham City. The usual format applies, so we'll begin with opening statements from our panellists. Then we'll open the floor to questions, and as always, for time, it's one question and one follow-up question. Could I ask you to remain on mute with your cameras off until it's your turn to ask the question? And please, could you also identify yourself and what media you represent? Because that's especially helpful for Lucy's first week as well, so she knows where you're all from. If you raise your hand, I'll make sure I come to everyone in turn, so don't worry, we won't miss you. So if everyone's happy, I'll hand over first to John Bruin from the NHS.
Thanks, Steve. Good morning, everybody. John Bruin, Chief Exec at Nottingham Healthcare. And so a couple of things from me. Brief updates on how we're doing with the vaccination programme, and then just a very high-level overview of the hospitals. So the vaccination programme is good news. We've provided over 1.1 million vaccines to date. About 480,000 of those have been second doses. And we're really pleased to be announcing the big Vax Weekend. So Friday from today, Saturday, Sunday and into Monday, eight o'clock in the mornings, eight o'clock at night, all our sites are available for walk-ins. People don't need to take to make an appointment. If you have an appointment already, that's fine, you can turn up as planned. And this is part of our really big push to meet the national targets identified by the Prime Minister and the government by the 19th of July. So we'd like to thank all our citizens' patience in getting the vaccines and achieving them, and for continuing to use the measures that are in place to protect themselves during this time. And so good news on the vaccination programme. And we'd like to emphasise that some of the lower-age cohorts are... There's still a significant number to do, so from people to 40 to 49 and below that bracket. Some of the younger age cohorts, 18 and above, haven't been open that long. So there's still a number to do, but as I say, you're welcome to come. Don't need to book eight till eight over the next four days. And the second part in terms of hospitals, right across the health system, there's been a real increase in demand, whether that's in primary care with our GPs, in our community hospitals, in emergency departments, in mental health sector. Obviously not all related to COVID, but the system is hot and very busy. And in terms of COVID particularly, we've had 17 admissions related to COVID over the last week, which compares to nine the week previously. So some increase there, and obviously we're keeping a close eye on those numbers. And I'm sure my colleagues may want to comment on that if we come to it in more detail later. Of those 17 people that are in beds, two are currently mechanically ventilated. And for the week of 17th to 23rd of June, there's been no deaths during that period. And for completeness, we've not had any admissions or deaths either in the Bassett Law district. So that's, like I said, a high-level summary from myself. Before I hand over to Jonathan, just to remind you, eight till eight, no appointment needed. Big weekend over the next four days. Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you, John, and good morning, everyone. Before I kick off with my update for you, can I just add to Steve's welcome, a really warm welcome to Lucy Hubber from Nottinghamshire County Council and the public health team here. We're really pleased to be working with Lucy on behalf of residents right across Nottinghamshire. I'm really delighted as well about the news that John has already passed on to you, that across Nottinghamshire, people who are entitled to a vaccine jab had the opportunity this coming weekend to walk in eight until eight to get a first or second dose of either the Pfizer or AstraZeneca vaccines. And that's really important, particularly in the light of what I'm going to go on to share about case rates in Nottinghamshire. So we've heard from John that in our hospitals, we've seen an increase over the last week or so in COVID-related activity. Now, it is starting from a low base, and the numbers are quite small, and we've yet to see whether that turns into an upward trend. But it does trigger some concern on my part, particularly when you set that alongside the ongoing increase in rates that we see in Nottinghamshire County. So compared to the England average, which now stands at 101 per 100,000, the headline rate in Nottinghamshire County at the moment stands at 72.8 per 100,000. And that compares with a headline rate of 47 per 100,000 a week ago. As ever, there are significant... Some significant variation in the rates across our districts and boroughs. And if I just mention some of those to you, to cover those off. So in Rushcliffe, where we continue to see our highest rates in Nottinghamshire County, we've currently got a rate of 158 per 100,000, followed by Gedling and Brockstow. So in Gedling, we have a rate of 85, and in Brockstow, a rate of 83 per 100,000. But other districts and boroughs, a little bit further north in the county, are not far behind that. So in Ashfield, we see a rate of 52 per 100,000, Bassett Law 49, Newercon Sherwood 45, and in Mansfield, 33 per 100,000. So as ever, a fair degree of variation. But across all of those districts and boroughs, you'll find the headline rates now are higher than they were a week ago. In general, we still find them being driven by increasing numbers amongst young people and young adults and adults up to the age of 40, all of whom are disproportionately represented in our numbers in the county. For example, we've had just over 100 young people of secondary school age diagnosed over the last week or so. And if we look at people in the age group 18 to 22, we've had actually 124 people. So that's... Those are really quite high numbers, given the relatively small portion of the overall population that those groups represent. So our message remains very much the same as what I passed on to you last week. Alongside the absolute importance of getting vaccinated as soon as you are entitled and making sure that you take advantage of the second dose to maximise the protection you've got, we also continue to encourage people to isolate and to get a PCR test right away if they develop symptoms. And the guidance which remains in place at step three is also really important in ensuring that we contain the spread of COVID-19 in Nottinghamshire. So that comes back to hands, face, space and fresh air. The other thing I'd like to add by way of introduction, if you'll allow me, is a word or two more about something we talked about last week. We highlighted the really quite serious health and wellbeing impacts of long COVID, or what's, in other contexts, is sometimes referred to as post-COVID syndrome. And I talked last week about the protection that we can each provide for ourselves against those impacts, those impacts, some of which are really... Can be serious enough to impair your ability really to carry on with some basic activities of daily living, and really focused on the protection that we get by ensuring that we get for ourselves both doses of the vaccine. This week, I just want to briefly highlight a further study that was mentioned, I think, in national media a couple of days ago. It arose from a study from Imperial College London, the React2 study, in which they've done some work with approximately half a million people across the country, asking them about COVID-19 and the range of symptoms which they may have experienced. And it turns out that about a fifth of the people that they surveyed have had COVID. And amongst that group who have had COVID, they established that about a third of those have had at least one symptom persisting for at least 12 weeks. And in fact, about one in seven of those who've had COVID continue to have three or more symptoms after 12 weeks. And in fact, this is not only affecting older age groups, as we might imagine. For people falling into the age group of 18 to 24, who reported having had COVID symptoms, almost a third of those, about 30% of them in fact, still had at least one symptom at the 12-week mark. And I'm wanting to bring fresh emphasis to that because for people across Nottinghamshire who might be still weighing up whether or not to take up the offer of a free vaccine, I really would urge them to take into account the extremely debilitating impact of long COVID. And if you're one of those who ends up experiencing long COVID, you may find that it actually has a very real impact on some of your plans for this summer. And perhaps not only your plans for this summer, but the period beyond, whether we're talking about your recreational ambitions, your working life, the care that you provide for your family, or other ambitions that you might have for the year ahead. So if you're weighing up the pros and cons of a vaccine, be sure to factor all of this in. And as I said at the outset, this weekend would be a great opportunity to take advantage of being able to walk in eight until eight into any of our vaccine sites across Nottinghamshire. Thank you. And over to Lucy Hubber, Director of Public Health in Nottingham City.
Hi, thank you, Jonathan, and thank you for the kind words of welcome. I'm really pleased to be joining the Nottingham and Nottinghamshire family. The position in Nottingham City is one of increasing case rates. We've just heard from Jonathan around what's happening in Nottinghamshire. For Nottingham City, we've had an increase from last week's 293 cases to 454 cases this week. So a really significant increase in a very short period of time. And that gives us a current rate of 136 per 100,000. And Jonathan mentioned that the national rate is 101. So you can see that in Nottingham City, we are seeing a really considerable increase in transmission. We're also seeing that more people who are getting tested are testing positive. We're now at 6% of people who are taking a PCR test are testing positive. And that's a much higher number than I would wish to see. So that leads very nicely to build on what we've heard this morning around why it's so important that people remember those key asks that we've been making all along, because they are still the way that we can have the biggest impact on reducing COVID. COVID is not just about serious illness or mortality. It is about those wider harms, and Jonathan's talked about those persisting symptoms for people. But it's also around the impact on children, their ability to maintain their education, the impact on our more deprived families and their ability to go to work and bring an income in. So we mustn't lose track of the fact that seeing a large number of cases has really big impact on our population and continues to have the bigger impact on those people who are more deprived or more likely to experience inequalities. So the three key asks that we've been talking about all along through this are remembering hands, face, space and fresh air. And that's even more important now as we're going out. So as we're beginning to see things open up, as we want to go and watch the football or we want to spend time with our family, remembering the importance of washing our hands, maintaining social distancing, keeping our distance from people or limiting the number of people in a gathering, remembering that it's only six people or two households inside, and trying to do as much activity outside as we can. And if you are going out and about, I would really ask you to take a test. Even if you haven't got symptoms, take one of the rapid tests and test your status. We advise twice a week, but even if you do it before you've got a large event coming up, just so that you're aware of your status. Clearly, if you've got symptoms, really encourage our population to take a PCR test and to isolate. We can see the big difference that it makes where people follow that simple guidance and reduce the number of people that they have contact with when they're symptomatic. And I'd really like to see more people being tested in Nottingham because that will help us better understand the current rates of transmission. We are seeing increases in our young adult population, and that's to be expected. They're the population who aren't yet vaccinated, and they're the population that do lots of that customer-facing work, which is opening up again, the people who are in bars, who are in restaurants, and also take advantage of the opening up, the people who go to bars and restaurants. So if you are 18 plus, please come along this weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, eight till eight, and come and get your first vaccine. If you've already got your first vaccine and you've had more than 56 days, so about the end of April, please come along and get your second vaccine. What we are seeing really clearly from the data, from the Delta variant, is the huge benefit that having two doses brings in terms of protection. And remember, it's not just protecting you, it's protecting those around you as well because it helps reduce the transmission of the virus. Thanks very much, Steve.
Thank you, Lucy. We can hand over now to questions from the media. If you'd like to raise your hands, and I'll come to you as in the order I see them appear. And again, please, for the benefit of the panel, if you could just identify who you are and where you're from. The first hand I saw raised was Hugh Caswell. Go on, Hugh.
Morning, everyone. I'm Hugh Caswell from BBC Nottingham. This is probably for John Bruin. Obviously, you've got this big push on vaccines this weekend, but in recent weeks, the programme in Nottinghamshire seems to be slowing down just a little bit. 37,000 jabs last week, the lowest weekly total since mid-April. So why is that?
Hi, Hugh. Yeah, thanks very much for your question. A good spot. And I think the first thing to say is that there is variability in the weekly outputs of the vaccination programme. I think we're aiming over the next four weeks to vary between 50,000, 35,000. The biggest constraint around how we run it is the availability of supply. We're still dependent on that push out, and we have to manage it as we can. So that's a national programme that we receive the vaccine by. So that's the first thing to say. We've got sufficient supply of the vaccines that we use in both the AZ and the Pfizer vaccine. And the other... It's not constrained as much, but in terms of the logistics of managing the programme is that we need to make sure that we use the resource effectively in terms of the staff availability and the bookings that we know are going to different places. So some variability in some of the site openings. But there are always sites open for people to avail themselves of the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Hugh, do you have a follow-up question?
Yes, this is probably for Jonathan. But I'd welcome any input from Lucy as well, if you feel that it's applicable. Jonathan, several testing sites, we can see, have been closing around Nottinghamshire. The one at County Hall has gone. I think one in Sutton is closing tomorrow. And so firstly, are there any more that are closing? Secondly, why are they closing? And lastly, can you sort of assure people that their ability to get a test if they need one is not going to be affected?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Hugh. So as we move through the pandemic, the Department of Health and Social Care are reviewing the network of testing sites that we make available to people right across the country, but in Nottinghamshire in particular. And certainly from earlier this week, people going on to .gov.uk to book in a drive-in site would have found that, for example, the facility that was previously available at County Hall in West Bridgford was no longer available. So they would have had other options. For example, nearby would have been options at Clifton and a couple on our university sites. And of course, booking on to the... Going on to the .gov.uk site, people without transport can also very easily order a free kit to be sent to their home as well. So all of those arrangements will continue to be in place. And yes, I can confirm that using those channels and arrangements, people in Nottinghamshire will continue to have ready access to a free PCR test, which of course is absolutely essential because it's one of the fundamental ways that we go about stopping the spread of coronavirus, keeping ourselves, our families and our communities around us safe, and of course, isolating while we wait for the result. What we will also be doing in the period ahead, and actually working on at the moment, is just exploring options around provision of mobile testing units to ensure that the network still spreads as wide as we need it across Nottinghamshire. So just at the moment, for example, my team are involved in looking at provision of mobile testing unit. And in fact, whether we might also deploy a mobile testing unit in the West Bridgford area, perhaps again at County Hall. So thank you for the question, because it is an opportunity to emphasise once again that isolating and getting a PCR test is a key way for us to contain COVID-19. I would say along that, alongside that, if... Another really key thing for us to keep in mind, and particularly this weekend, is that if anyone in Nottinghamshire is eligible for a vaccine jab and they've not yet taken up the offer, then the thing that we want to really strongly underline to everybody is that this weekend is a great opportunity to do a walk-in, eight until eight, any time. And they will find there that they can get their first or second doses of AstraZeneca or Pfizer jabs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Hugh, thanks for the questions. Next hand up I can see is Ben Reed. Ben, hello?
Cheers, Steve. Hello, everyone. Ben Reed from Nottingham Post, Nottinghamshire Live. We've seen some evidence that's been sent to us about Mansfield Vaccination Centre. From Monday, it appears it's going to be closed for seven of the upcoming 14 days. Given that's such an important time, you know, in the vaccine period that we're at at the minute, can you just give reason as to why that is? Is that a supply issue? Is that due to a low uptake among young people? And is that a concern you have, you know, across wider the county, rather than just purely on Mansfield side?
Yes, and so John Bruin, I'll take that and start with Ben. Thank you for your question and observing that. So I refer partly to my previous answer. So we are aware, and the most important thing is that this isn't supply constraints. So we have got sufficient vaccine right across our system. And so as we keep saying, particularly over the next four days, you can turn up without a booking and you can get your vaccine. And specifically to do with Mansfield and with all our centres, we have a relatively fixed resource of staff that we have to deploy to keep the site, as many sites open as possible. And we are also informed by bookings in any particular area. So as you say, if a particular site has relatively few bookings and with a relatively fixed amount of staff, then we'll deploy them where they can be most usefully used and provide the most vaccines. So there will always, as I said, there will always be sites open. And we will ensure that we continue to publicise the opening and closing times of the various sites because, as you say, there will be some variability to that. But the important thing to note is it's not due to concerns or lack of vaccine supply. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Ben, did you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thanks, John. Looking at these...
Ben, sorry to cross you there. I can see Jonathan's got his hand up. Jonathan, sorry, did you want to come in on the last question?
I wonder if I might. Ben, thank you for the question. And just to add to what John has said, from a public health perspective at the moment, I've... We've heard clearly that the supply is not the key constraint here. What I'm most concerned about for people across Nottinghamshire is about demand for the vaccine. We've seen fantastic numbers of people coming forward, and the vast majority pressing forward to get their vaccine as soon as possible. But for those people who, for whatever reason, have found themselves too busy or hesitant, we're wanting to make sure that we put everything in place possible to support them, give full consideration to the benefits of the vaccine. And I'm really pleased that the big weekend that we're running this weekend, as part of that, will be laying on GPs and other health colleagues at sites who can spend a bit of time with people, just talking through any questions or concerns that they might have. Because of what is of most interest to us is that people are really able to make a really fully informed decision about this for themselves, weighing up all the considerations, including protecting themselves and their families and communities, not only against the immediate effects of infection, but potentially some of the longer-term impacts that we talked about earlier on. So that's really why we're just taking every opportunity to press home the message about coming forward, taking advantage of the eight till eight walk-in arrangements that we've got at all of our vaccine sites this weekend. Thanks.
Thank you, Jonathan. That was really valuable, extra detail. Ben, do you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, thank you both. Looking forward a bit more to sort of past the summer. Obviously, Nottingham is one of the biggest university cities in England. Is it something that you would consider, maybe looking at vaccine sites being set up on university campuses to help with, you know, the new influx of students that come in? Is that something that, you know, obviously, the second jab delays with the time period in between now and when they are due the second one? Is that something that perhaps, as a health system, you would look at implementing if possible across the sites in Nottingham?
Yeah, again, if I take that first, thanks, Ben. Again, a good question. So we're in the planning stages of what we're describing as phase three of the vaccination rollout, which will commence in September time. As you say, when students come back to university, and Nottingham's got a really rich tradition of being a really good centre for university studies. Within that phase three planning, we are looking at how the geography, if you like, of where the vaccination centre locations will be across the county. And there are a number of quite significant variables that have yet to be confirmed nationally as to what that phase three programme will look like, as to whether the boosters, as they're described, will be different vaccines to the ones people had to start with, whether there'll be one or two doses, and how that will fit in with the flu programme, which also starts nationally at this time of year as well. So because of those variables being yet to be confirmed, that the quantum, the full amount of vaccination that's going to be required across the county is still to be decided, and that will inform about where our centres will be best sited. And we'll undoubtedly continue to have vaccination centres, whether they're on university or not, and work in progress. And the other thing to say is that there will be a significant push to make them much more accessible locally. to say is that there'll be a significant push to make them much more accessible locally, within primary care, within practices, within community pharmacies. And so all that needs to be sort of shredded into the sort of algorithm and the working out of exactly how the sightings will be. And we'll obviously, you know, publish and communicate that as we go forward over the next couple of months. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Thank you. I can see that Lucy wants to come in on this as well. So we'll just hand over to her.
And I think we've also got an opportunity before the September return to encourage vaccination. So we're just at the end of term now. So we would encourage any students that are still in Nottingham to take advantage of the big weekend and to come along and get vaccinated, get their first vaccination here, so that we know that we've got, we've got our current student population vaccinated before they start to go home for the summer. And, and working with universities. So now is the time that we begin to plan for September, working with the universities to encourage COVID vaccinations being part of that, arriving at university health check. We already do it around meningitis vaccination for new students and flu vaccination for new students. So we can build part of that messaging in as well. But it is about saying the opportunity is now. So working through, you know, the further education colleges nationally, beginning to get the messages about the importance and particularly things like this, this big vaccination weekend, not just here in Nottingham for our students, but, but those that are running nationally are really important about, about getting that population, you know, hopefully fully vaccinated by the time they join us in September, so that they are part of the booster programme if eligible, rather than coming and having the vaccine when, when they start with us. September is almost too late for what we want to achieve from it.
Thank you, Lucy. Ben, thanks for the questions.
Thank you.
Next hand I can see is Phil Brewster. Phil, how are your technical problems? And before we start, because I know you're recording for ITV Central, is there something I can do in terms of spotlighting or is it all working out for you at the moment?
I hope so. I've got a very weird split screen, but I'm hoping our traffic team is recording this. We'll be seeing all screen. If not, there'll be some interesting editing that lies ahead in the next few hours. Yeah, just first question really, it's to both, I guess, to Lucy Harbour and Jonathan Griffin, too. The issue of schools. One of the things we're sort of picking up on from social media and other bits and bobs is just this general frustration about the increasing number of people who are having to isolate from schools and the disruption that that is causing, not only to parents but to teachers, but also to children and their education. And it's clear, obviously, they've had a pretty grim old 16 months of it generally. What is the importance of doing this? Because is it, is it actually worth creating all this havoc for the sake of, you know, isolating and people having to go away? Is it worth it, I'm guessing, given the fact that most children don't necessarily have the same effects from COVID that all the people do?
Thanks, Phil. Who would like to answer the question?
I'm happy to go first and then Jonathan can add in.
Thank you.
It's absolutely critical that we continue to reduce all means of transmission, wherever we have the opportunities. And we have to remember that, that schools, whilst young people themselves might not, you know, be very likely to have serious illness, they are actually a point of potential transmission out of school into the home or from home into the school. And we have seen, so certainly the early days of Delta in the Boltons, Blackburns and Bedford's had strong school focus for the beginning of those transmission points. So we are still, I think, at the point of wanting to be very clear with, with managing children and young people who work in really quite large bubbles within the school system in order to maintain as much normality as possible, the opportunity to reduce transmission. Already, I've been very impressed by the measures that have been taken in Nottingham City in terms of making sure that schools are as safe as possible and that those close contacts are made as small as possible. So I'm not seeing large cohorts coming out of our schools for isolation. They are as small as they possibly can be to reduce the impact of that. We have got a few schools that are participating in the national pilot about serial daily testing for close contacts, which will keep children in school, isolating outside of school, but able to come into school. And we're hoping that those national pilots will report so that by September, we will have a clear picture of if we are still in this position, of how we can try and further minimise the disruption to children and young people. It is incredibly tough and it's very tough for those parents who are sending, you know, having to take time off work, for example, to support children that are isolating at home. So we don't do this lightly. We do take each and every single one of them as a, as a risk assessment. We're not looking at vaccinating children currently, but that doesn't mean to say that vaccination still doesn't have a role here. So in terms of protecting the staff in schools and all staff, not just the teachers, getting vaccinated is really important. And for parents as well, parents come and gather at school, they, they pick their children up from the playground and vaccination's really important. So you know what I'm going to say now? We've got the big vaccination weekend. Really encourage people, even if you think that you are young enough that vaccine isn't going to, to, you know, that COVID isn't going to have an effect on you necessarily, please have the vaccine because it will help protect people and help us be able to keep children in school in the long run.
Thank you, Lucy. Jonathan, did you have anything to add?
Lucy's hit the key points really nicely. Phil, I'll just touch on two or three of them again, from a county perspective. I'd want to, first of all, thank our school leaders right across the county who've worked so hard to put in place really good arrangements to, on the one hand, sustain education for our children and young people in a year that's been so difficult for them. At the same time as that, also making sure that schools are run in a way which are really COVID secure. So notwithstanding those really good arrangements, we have found that at the start of this week, in Nottinghamshire County, we had a little over 2,100 children, young people who were needing to isolate as a result of cases within the school setting. That said, I probably ought to underline that although school settings sometimes provide us the lens through which we become aware of cases in that particular age group, the evidence that we have in general points towards really good arrangements and control measures being in place in our schools. What we do find is that in many cases, there is some evidence of transmission amongst children, young people outside of the school setting. Now, in many cases, young people are going about their, their ordinary business in a way which is entirely in line with the guidance and the restrictions in place at step three. So there's certainly no grounds for singling out young people or any kind of finger pointing at all. Nevertheless, it's an opportune moment just to re-emphasise again, the measures which remain in place at step three, which it's really important that everyone of any age keeps going with for the time being. So that includes the hands, face, space and fresh air guidance that is in place. It includes the absolute importance, if you do develop symptoms or think you might have symptoms of COVID, of isolating right away and getting a PCR test. And of course, to come back again to the point that we, we are continually reiterating this morning, some of the transmission that we see is outside of the school setting, out there in the community. Some of it will be taking place in household settings. We do know that the vaccines are also effective at dampening down transmission as well and the spread of the virus. And so that brings us back to, again, the real value of the vaccines and the importance right across Nottinghamshire for anyone who is eligible but not yet taken up the offer of a vaccine to come forward and participate in the big weekend this weekend. Make sure you come forward eight till eight to get your first or second dose of either vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Phil, did you have any follow-up questions?
I did. I'm going to be slightly cheeky and ask sort of one slightly at Lucy and one at Jonathan. Lucy, the first one I've got to ask you is, you mentioned the issue of this pilot scheme whereby, you know, you can come into school, even if you're isolating at home, where you, if you take the test. I mean, there has been some speculation that that isn't desperately ethical, because you have to kind of opt into that yourself. But there may be other people in the classroom. Are they aware that that's their own, that someone they are in classroom with has been in contact with someone who has COVID? And is that really fair on them? You know, surely the idea is if you're going to break the transmission chain, these people shouldn't be in classroom at all. And secondly, Jonathan, for you, just to think about is, we first talk about things like the schools thing. You know, we're seeing events going ahead like the Grand Prix and football events and stuff like that. And yet, school sports days are being biffed and parents are told they can't go to that, despite the fact that it's outside. I just get you a view of kind of really, it's kind of the justice or fairness of that. So Lucy first, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you for that really tough question, Phil, from my first media briefing. The pilot programmes are targeting close contacts of an identified case. And therefore they are, and it requires daily testing. So it's a very controlled way of limiting the, the impact of having to isolate against the potential of transmission onwards. And there are control measures in place for if any of those people then test positive, what then happens. But that's all part of the learning of the pilot, is actually how well does this maintain COVID within that group of close cohorts? And what are we learning from that? And when the schools participate, they sign up to that, that ethical code as part of that, which is why it's being done in a small number of schools, so that it can be done robustly and safely, rather than it being offered out in all schools, which was initially proposed in December and that position was pulled back from. I think until we get the results of those pilots, it's very hard to, to make any assumptions about the effectiveness. But we are hearing around that model being taken forward. And there are some national pilots now around household contacts being able to participate in, in this way. So still being able to go to work so long as they do the daily contact testing, which again has, has some of those challenges that you said around other people that they may be meeting with. But if you follow the rules of hands, face, space, fresh air, that's a very reduced risk. And if you get yourself vaccinated, it further reduces the risk as well. So it's all part of that, that wider picture. But as soon as we get the findings of those pilots, I think there'll be a lot in there for us to consider.
Thank you, Lucy. Jonathan, there was a cheeky third question from Phil, which we'll allow, because he's not, he's not always with us. So we'll allow it this time if you're...
I've got a few in the bank. Thank you.
Thanks.
So can you...
Sorry, did you want me to just repeat it again?
No, I'm having, I'm having a problem with my unmute.
Okay, I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Oh, right. It tells me that I'm muted. But okay, if you can hear me, I'll carry on until Steve waves at me to shut up. So Phil, thank you for the question. And I think it was a question about the, the sense of inconsistency or even unfairness that some big events at the moment are being enabled, facilitated to carry on, whereas other events down at a local level, for example, school sports days, at the moment aren't going ahead in some instances. So yeah, thank you for the, for the question. And I, and I, I note too, if I look back over the, over the last year, I suppose one of the things which has characterised our experience of COVID-19 has been the sense of unfairness throughout, most notably initially in terms of the way that the burden of COVID has fallen so unfairly across our populations and much heavier amongst some social groups than others. It's also true that at various points, we found ourselves challenged with trying to make sure that the measures that we introduce to, to limit the further impact, we've struggled to make those fully consistent at times. I think that's something that we've all felt and observed. Just at the moment, we're in a transition phase, aren't we? We're in step three of the roadmap and wanting to move to a point where it does become safe to, to make further relaxations. And in that transition period, I think some of these apparent inconsistencies are perhaps emphasised even further. And you've, you've highlighted one. I think I want to add a note in terms of my support for the really difficult decisions that school leaders are having to take on a daily and weekly basis. And now, many of them regarding what they do with very popular events like school sports days. There is some guidance out there which they will all be taking into account. And I fully support those that have decided that they're unable to run their, their sports day events in a way that is compliant with that, with that guidance. I'd also want to say that it's really important that across Nottinghamshire, at this point, we take all the steps that are necessary to in, to avoid a further unfairness and unequal burden of COVID-19 in the months ahead. The, the variation, inconsistency and unfairness perhaps even that I observe at the moment is the different levels of uptake of the vaccine across Nottinghamshire. So it is a concern to me that in some parts of the county, uptake of the vaccine, particularly amongst adults under the age of 50, particularly in the age group around 40 to 49, is lower than in, in other groups. So with that in mind, again, it prompts me to come back again to, to urge people across Nottinghamshire to make sure that we don't continue to experience this unfairness and inequality in the way that we experience COVID-19 in our communities. And to avoid that by coming forward for a vaccine if you've had the offer, and you can do that this weekend, eight till eight, by walking into one of our vaccine centres to take advantage of either first or second dose of, of either AstraZeneca or Pfizer vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Thank you for the questions, Phil. I can't see any more hands up. Sometimes I have an issue with Teams and it doesn't always flag. So I just want to pause momentarily. Is there anybody else from the media who has a question?
No.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure everyone had the opportunity. So I just wanted to take a moment just to turn back to the panelists. I just wanted to check we have covered everything. Is there any, any closing statements you'd like to make? Or do you think we've covered everything? We'd like to get across. John?
Yeah, thank you, Steve. Just in terms of closing statement, just to perhaps reiterate a couple of points. First of all, to, to thank all our people across all the communities of the county for their efforts in getting on top of this. We've, as Jonathan's been saying, we tolerated a lot. We're making great progress. But let's not slacken off just yet. There's still a bit of a road to go. But to thank everybody for their, all the contributions that people are making. And remember that hands, face, space, fresh air, really important. The vaccine programme is going well. And we know the vaccines are safe. And we know they're effective. And we know that they're reducing serious illness and transmission. Really important, we have good stocks, we have sufficient supply of both vaccines, particularly for this big weekend, eight till eight, all our sites don't need an appointment. And you can turn up, if you have an appointment, you can turn up as planned and you will be able to receive your vaccine. So please obey yourselves of that. And for the weeks ahead, we, we continue to have sufficient vaccine to enable our younger cohorts in, across the county and to get jabbed. So that will be my summary point. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, John. Lucy and Jonathan, we've covered a lot of ground today, but I just wanted to make sure you, you have the opportunity. Lucy?
I just wanted to add in that really important that Jonathan made earlier to what John has just said. If you are at all hesitant, concerned, have some questions, this is the perfect weekend for coming along and asking those questions. Come along to one of the vaccination centres, eight till eight, and come and talk to some of our very friendly staff who will listen to your concerns and talk it through with you. It doesn't mean to say that you have to have the jab if you still don't want to at the end, but at least you will have had the conversation, be able to get your questions answered for you personally, rather than some of the general information out there. So come along and get vaccinated, eight till eight, across the weekend. You can just walk in or come and talk to somebody across this weekend as well because it might just give you the information that you need to give you the confidence.
Thank you, Lucy. Jonathan, if you have anything you'd like to add at the end?
Yeah, please. Briefly, you're expecting me to remind you all about the big weekend. But the point that I really want to make alongside that is that even when you have been vaccinated, it's really important that we make twice weekly testing part of our routine. And if we follow through on getting ourselves vaccinated and testing ourselves regularly and following that hands, face and space and fresh air guidance, then we can make sure that we're doing absolutely everything to avoid that uptick in COVID-19 hospital activity that we've just started to see. We can make sure that we avoid that becoming into a more sinister trend that will threaten people more widely across Nottinghamshire. So it's really to underline the importance of making twice weekly testing part of our routine alongside vaccinations. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. If there's no more questions then, that's great. It just remains for me to say thank you to Lucy, thank you to Jonathan and thank you to John as always for your time. And thank you to the media as well for being here and help us to share our messages, especially around the big weekend. So I'm sure you've all had it now, but eight till eight. No need for an appointment. But otherwise, can I just wish you all a happy Friday and I hope you all have a lovely weekend.
Thank you very much. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Cheers.